Hi Linda, how are you? You're muted. Hi Amy.
Hi, how are you?
Great, how are you doing?
Good.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, you too.
See, it's like, it's like old times.
I was gonna say, I'm kinda disappointed I am seeing you again.
Sorry about that. Maybe I'll talk, maybe I'll talk to Rick. I don't really know Rick, so. It's not, it's not my fault, Amy.
Oh, why? I do love you.
I know, yeah. I, I get this a lot, actually.
I bet you do. Oh, well, it's what it is.
Yep. Any snow left on the ground out there?
Very little.
Yep. Hi Barbara.
She's muted too.
Oh, okay. That's the, uh, that's gonna be the, uh, the phrase of the year. You're muted, you're muted. It has, it has changed my life, I'll tell you that.
I need it.
You too.
Yep. We, I, I have, uh, I have days where I'm, I'm in Plymouth right now, so I can be in Truro at, uh, you know, in the morning for a three-hour meeting and then fifteen minutes later be in Great Barrington, followed by, uh, you know, ten minutes later I'm in, uh, Worcester, uh, then, uh, then I shoot off to South Hadley after that, you know? So, I just sit here the whole time. Hey Steve. You're muted.
Good, that should do it.
Yep, there you go. How's everything up in Middleton, Steve?
It's terrific.
It's good. I have a meeting in Coventry on Monday night.
Bless you.
Hopefully get to the finish line there soon. I think, I think this time, uh, we have, we have a lot of good candidates this time. But once they, once they eliminated that charter provision, that opened everything up for us, I think.
What's a big one?
Yeah. Hi Mike.
Muted. Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, can everybody?
Hi Mike.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you.
All right, good, sorry. All right. This is Michael Barbaro. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Rick Ward.
Here.
Audrey Labrie.
Here.
Amy Salter.
Here.
Barbara Anderson.
Here.
Linda Dagel.
Present.
Taylor Tower.
She's present.
Okay, thank you. Bernie Lynch.
I'm here.
Thank you. Anticipating speakers on the agenda may announce themselves at the time that they speak. Introduction to Remote Meeting. Good evening. The open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order on March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the coronavirus nineteen. The order which you can find posted on the town's website along with the agenda materials for this evening meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment when appropriate. This meeting is convened by video conference via Zoom meeting as posted on the agenda found on the town's website identifying how the public may join. It is being recorded that attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share screen, your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting ground rules. Before we turn to the first item of the agenda, please permit me to cover the, some ground rules for the effective and clear conductive of our business meeting to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Anyone participating via Zoom must display their first and last name. This evening's gonna be a little different than our normal evening because this is an interview session between the Board of Selectmen and two candidates. There will be no public comment nor selectmen comment this evening. We're gonna jump right into the agenda after the Pledge of Allegiance. So, would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Board members, please remember not to mute yourself because you won't, you won't be able to get unmuted unless, uh, Linda sends you a, um, a, uh,
A mail request.
So, without further ado, Mr. Bernie Lynch.
Yes.
The first candidate to us.
Our first candidate, uh, that you have tonight to speak with is Steve Delaney. Uh, we, we provided a resume of Steve and his cover letter that he submitted and application for this, uh, position as interim, uh, Town Manager in, um, in Winchton. Uh, Steve has considerable years, uh, of experience, uh, in municipal management, uh, and, uh, has served in the role of interim, uh, uh, manager, administrator, as well as, uh, other positions over the last, uh, a couple of years. Uh, and, uh, he's joining us here, so, uh, I will, uh, turn it over to, uh, you, Mr. Chair, or, or Steve to, uh, begin the process.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve.
Hello.
How are you?
Very good, thanks.
So, let me start out with, thank you for your interest in Winchton. Please take a few minutes to tell us about your interest in the position and why you believe, you believe you'll be a successful candidate.
Um, I think the easiest way to start that is, um, I've been around municipal government my whole career. Um, I retired from my full-time job at the town of Danvers almost four years ago, a little over four years ago. Um, I taught for many years nights at, uh, Boston University in finance and management and stopped that a couple of years ago. And I've done a couple interim, um, assignments, done some earlier in my career, but, uh, most recently I was, uh, down in Coventry, Rhode Island, where, where Bernie is, uh, still doing the recruitment a couple of years later. Uh, that's been a difficult one.
We can't fill your shoes, Steve, sorry. Um, but I think you'll find, um, I, I hate to date myself, but being a product of the sixties somehow we think we can make a difference, uh, particularly in communities that are going through a transition. Uh, you will find that there are a number of us out there that do this kind of thing on an interim basis. Um, we've got the experience, the contacts on the state level. Uh, we understand the dynamics of a, of a, of the organization and believe we can help out. And that's kinda where I'm coming from. I enjoy it, I enjoy helping out. Um, and, um, I've got experiences you've seen on the resume virtually in every aspect of municipal management. Um, and, uh, so I can bring to you that ability to come in and get started, um, and help you out. Um, I know the area pretty well out there. I'm kind of a train buff at heart. I can probably see some of the stuff on the walls behind me, but, uh, uh, Winchton's part of that great train history from the lines coming up from Gardner out to Keene. So, I've traveled through most of those areas out through there. Winchton is not unlike the town where I grew up in the city of Peabody and, and the, uh, leather industry and saw the decline of it and the changes that that brought to the city. So, that's kinda my background. Um, I understand the challenges that face most of the old industrial towns of Massachusetts, so I'm pretty sensitive to that. Uh, and I think I can help out. So, that's, I, I don't, that's the short tour of my background, yet probably haven't got time to do the whole ninety-minute thing. So, that's kinda what brings me here and I think I can help out.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question we have is, would, uh, would the Board of Selectmen like to ask a question?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yes, Mr. Delaney. How much do you know about Winchton and its recent history, both financially and politically?
Um, quite a bit, actually. Um, in, in doing my research, um, I was startled at some of the stuff that I was reading. So, I decided to see if I could start toward the end of the book instead of the beginning. And I read the most recent, uh, uh, credit upgrade report, uh, which gave me great hope that things were turning around. Um, because as you read back through the different chapters of the management letters, it's a little chilling. As I said to Bernie, I said, it, it, it can really make you stop. It's not unlike situations I've seen. Um, when I was in the town of Georgetown, my first month there as the Town Administrator, we lost an override, we had zero free cash, and we had layoffs and cutbacks in the work week for the, for the town. Uh, with, between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we were able to turn it around. Uh, my role in Georgetown was not only Town Administrator, but also the Finance Director and HR Director. So, we had to do it all, but we turned it around with cooperation. Um, I tend to be a consensus builder if at all possible. Um, I've always found, particularly in smaller towns, there's no place for big ego. So, I, I dig in and do what I need to do on, as, as a Town Manager and Town Administrator to tell about. Um, and then from what I've seen, things are turning around. I think you got a ways to go. I just, since Prop Two and a Half came in in nineteen eighty, we've never had great years of financial excess. So, we've been able to make do and tighten the belts for the last forty years, and we still are. Uh, during this COVID period, it adds even another challenge. And with the lack of additional aid coming our way, we've gotta be more creative in how we, how we manage that. So, um, I'm pretty familiar with what I see.
Thank you. Yep. Uh, Amy, you wanna ask the next question?
Sure. Let me see here. It is expected that the fiscal year twenty-two budget will be prepared by the current Town Manager before he leaves. However, there are several months before the budget will be presented to the, to the Town Meeting. What is your budgeting and financial management experience? What are your thoughts on the impact of COVID nineteen upon municipal finances? And how well will you know Munis?
Um, let me, let me make a backtrack a little bit and, and just, um, in answering the last question first on Munis, um, I'm very familiar with Munis. We had it in Georgetown, um, and so I worked well with it. Uh, Munis is good if you, it's an expensive system. Um, but it works well if you spend the money to make it work well. Um, and that was the, what I found in Georgetown. We weren't doing it properly in terms of backups. We were doing our own backups. When we switched to Munis being on their servers and they're doing the updates and the backups made a huge difference. Um, so I'm familiar with that. But just backing up a little bit, um, my process of assimilation, if you will, into an interim role, it's really some key pieces that I do. First piece is data gathering, financial. Um, I wanna know what the picture looks like immediately. What's the cash flow look like? What's the monthly reconciliations look like? Um, I also wanna know in terms of timelines. For example, you mentioned the budget is pretty well together. But what are the timelines that need to be met? Advertising the budget, budget hearings, uh, the relationship with the Finance Committee, cause it's a hand-in-hand process uh, to get to the Town Meeting process. And I know it was delayed this year because of COVID. Um, is there a deadline for getting, for example, the ballots printed? Um, we don't wanna miss something. That'd look pretty silly if we missed the deadline. So, usually what I do is back, I start with the Town Meeting and backtrack through, to the current day to make sure we've got the deadlines and timelines set up. Um, the second piece I take a look at is the, um, legal issues in getting up to date on, on assimilating quick. Um, understanding what there are out there for legal issues that I need to be aware of. Project management, uh, what's active out there that I need to know about? Um, what's going well, what's not going well? Um, I wanna take a look at IT management, uh, the risk of, um, IT breakdowns and, uh, the malware kind of issues. What's our vulnerability piece on that? Um, that's the kinda thing I look at immediately, and that happens pretty quickly in the first few days. So, by the, let's say if this started the first week in February, which I, I think you were looking at. If you meet the second week, I would have an update for you at that second meeting as to what I've learned so far. This is not a long process for getting into it. Um, and I, that's kind of a long answer. I hope I answered your question. Um, but, uh, my finance background, um, I gotta know what every line in that budget means, frankly. Um, I have to know what's gonna bite us, what feels good, what, what's working well, uh, but what are the potential downfalls? Uh, for example, um, if we look at it, at revenue income, um, estimates and just one, just to pick one out, you have a pretty good line item for a meal tax, for example. How's that gonna impact? And if that drops, uh, what else do I need to know about in terms of impacts? And that's a small one by comparison. Um, we always used to look at, what's the economy doing? Does that affect our exercise, um, income? What's the, what's the tax collection versus delinquency ratio? Um, how is that going? Um, are we cleaning out some of the older accounts that might have been warrant articles that still have balances? Can we fold any of those back into the general fund? So, that's kinda, finances, it's gotta be the top of the list for, uh, management, for whoever you pick either interim or long-term. Um, you can't overemphasize the need to be on top of the finances.
Good. So, uh, let me just, uh, before, before I have Audrey ask you a question. Um, so let me just tell you that our timelines, usually we meet, uh, our Town Meetings in May. Um, usually around the nineteenth or twentieth, somewhere around that timeframe. Uh, it's a Monday night. We back into it by starting, um, in February. Um, the current Town Manager who is leaving is gonna have a draft budget prepared for us, given the current estimates that we have. Uh, and then we back into it with warrant articles, uh, meetings with the Finance Committee, um, and proposals from capital planning and whatnot. And then we move forward and post the warrant articles. We have open hearings for the Finance Committee for the warrant articles, like any small town. And then we move forward and print them. So, I think it's thirty to forty-five days out for the actual Town Meeting, when everything's said and done. But with the COVID, um, last year, our, our Town Meeting actually didn't happen till, uh, late September, maybe October, um,
And it was here?
Yeah, we used a, a one, one-twelfth budget till we got some idea where the state was. So, that's kinda where we're at last year. I, again, this year, nobody knows when the state budget will come out. But that's the timelines we generally work under, and we work with the Finance Committee to set all the, the timelines ahead of time. That, if that's helpful to you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Audrey, uh, you're next up there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good evening, Mr. Delaney. It's nice to meet you.
Likewise.
I, I was pleased to hear that you've gone back through some of the management letters. Uh, as you said, uh, if you start in the middle of everything, uh, it looks pretty grim. Uh, the last audit we did, um, were a lot better shape. Um, transparency is a word that, uh, I myself and the board members and such have really striven to keep to heart. Um, the citizens of Winchton were very disillusioned. And, um, we've worked very hard over the last five years, five and a half years, um, to bring back their trust and, and to move forward. Um, one of the biggest, I wanna say bugaboos, that in that, in my own opinion, is sometimes the relationship between, um, the Town Manager, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, um, and then not, you know, not so much the Board of Selectmen. Um, as a, as an interim Town Manager, how do you see that relationship between, uh, the interim Town Manager, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee, um, meshing together?
Um, a lot of it is, you know, the old standard of communication. Um, you need to be able to pick up the phone or have the meetings and hash it out. The numbers are numbers. The philosophy of how you get to what it's gonna be is, is part of that process. But the communication is, is a key. Um, I tend to be very visible. Um, I wanna be visible. So, I would be visible with the Finance Committee, with the School Committee to stop in and say hello, for example. It's harder to dislike people. It's harder to dislike people if you know what they look like and have something to say to them. Um, so it's, it's, it's imperative that you start to develop, be able to work across the aisle, if you will. We all have a common goal. I mean, you're all sitting there as part of this board uh, with a common goal of trying to make Winchton a better community. And, and you gotta keep that goal in mind, even though there might be some differences as we get to the finish line on any budgeting experience. Um, the numbers piece is the easy piece. It's just numbers. And it's always incumbent to, just be honest with them. These are what they look like. This is where we're going. So, that those are never in dispute. They should never be. Um, it's about the philosophy of how you spend and where the priorities are. And you do your best to kinda negotiate, and the art of negotiation and compromise, I think, is where I come from. As I said earlier, I try to build, uh, through collaborative, uh, kind of efforts and, um, and, uh, try to cooperate to get to the goal.
Thank you very much.
Um, Barbara, you wanna ask the next question?
Sure. Um, how do you envision the role of an interim Town Manager? And how would you bring yourself up to speed on the issues facing the town?
Um, I think it, the, I think the role of the interim, um, has to be, in a broad sense, I've gotta be able to do the day-to-day job that allows you to focus on the recruitment. So, for the permanent Town Manager. That doesn't mean that you're absent, but you have to have confidence in my ability to run the day-to-day operations um, and brief you at your meetings without you getting bogged down in issues of the day. Um, so, in terms of, to answer your other part of the question, excuse me. My initial assessment is to dig in with every department, every department head, with every one of you and get your feedback. What's working well, what isn't working well? What do you see as the issues that are important to each of you and to the board? Um, even if that means a, a separate meeting for us as a, as a board and town, interim Town Manager to sit down and kinda have some of this stuff out. Um, in, in my old Wenham days, the Board of Selectmen liked to go out to dinner, which often created some issues, but it was always a posted meeting because they felt, this is the way we're gonna sit down and talk things through. And the press would sit at the table with us. It was a very odd kind of setup. But you know, it took the edge off things. Um, and you can do an informal kinda discussion as a posted meeting, just to kinda hash this stuff through. But my first immersion would be pretty intense in the first week or so, uh, which include discussions with, you know, with the union issues, uh, with the calls out to each union leader to understand what works for them. Preventive labor relations is a huge piece of any collective bargaining effort among all of the unions. I mean, they've gotta be able to call the manager, um, if they've got a, a problem. Um, and sometimes it's a problem that we can work out without a major catastrophe, but you gotta be able to listen. It's the same thing with citizens, if they're calling in during the COVID period. It, it's tougher to have that contact. I've always enjoyed having the senior residents of the community be able to walk in Town Hall because they were all paying the tax bill. None of them paid it online. Uh, but they'd come in and sit in the office and talk for a little bit, and that made a difference. Tougher these days. So, you gotta pick up the phone, um, and have some conversations. It's about communication. It's about immersion. It's about being sure that I know what's out there and, and what's the potential for things to bite us. Um, so my, that's my role as a, as an interim, to kinda keep it moving, keep it going. Um, I don't see the interim as a change agent necessarily, um, but someone who is not afraid to make decisions and keep things going on behalf of the Board of Select. Cause you, you folks are the chief executive authority of the town and, and legal authority. It's my role as the interim to make sure you have the best information going forward, but you also need to focus on getting that permanent Town Manager.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, project management. Winchton has a number, pro, number of projects in the pipeline. The redevelopment of two vacant school buildings into veterans housing. The, the development of a marijuana cultural facility and the development of vacant property with Brownfield issue into a micro brewery. The rebuild, rebuilding of Central Street. Can you describe your experience in managing multiple complex projects?
Um, yes. Um, the key piece on any project is who, who are the team members that are, that are part of that team? Uh, how often are they meeting? What are the roles? Um, and again, the finance piece has gotta come into play here in terms of who's managing that part. Um, but back in my old Public Works days, I would handle a bunch of Public Works projects as the operations manager. Could be construction, it could be, uh, any one of a number of things. Um, and you always had something going on. I mean, the, the key piece is, we used to use what they call PRT charts, you know, which would sort of timeline charts to kinda define all the tasks as you go along and stay on top of the project. Um, those are all computerized now, thankfully, but, uh, it's, it's about understanding each team and being involved with each team as best you can. You may not have the luxury of, of having it delegated up. It would probably, your smaller communities, the managers would probably need to be involved in each one of them, at least to the point of understanding each one. So, I've done that.
Audrey, you had a, a question?
I was gonna, I was gonna segue into the project management. Um, we're looking at your resume. We're looking at your resume for Phillips Academy, if I read the title correctly, facilities planning and project. So it seems like you've got some some good tools in your toolbox for project management.
Yes. That was a long time ago, thanks for catching it. But yeah, we had over a million square feet on the roof at Phillips Academy, and the office of physical plan maintained it all. We'd be involved in specialist removal projects, dormitory renovations, all kinds of things. My background is not technical as, you know, in construction, but I've learned enough over the years to understand bringing the experts in and to oversee it as a manager. I've been able to do that.
Thank you.
Rick, you want to ask the next question?
Sure. All of the town's collective bargaining agreements have been settled, but there is always the administration of the contracts and general personnel management. Can you describe your experience and approach to personnel administration?
Sure. My last full-time job was with the town of Deansville as the HR director. I kind of downsized a little bit toward the end of my career, if you will, on my full-time I was the chief negotiator for most of the contracts at the table. A couple of them, for example, police, they used legal counsel at the table, so so did we, but most of the others, I would do the direct bargaining with ASME agent, or we had a professional technical group, the middle management group. We had seven different collective bargaining units in Deansville. I would handle grievances, I would handle termination hearings or grievance hearings, arbitration preparation I would do, along with council review, of course. I would handle disciplinary actions in terms of investigation of a number of cases. So I was pretty good at getting the facts, if you will, and I found the facts today don't always look the same tomorrow. So it was always incumbent to kind of get the most and the best information you can. But part of that is also having a relationship with each union president, because you've got to understand that they have a constituency too. And oftentimes, the complaints and little things that grow into big things can be alleviated by, again, having a discussion. And sometimes management makes mistakes, not often, but and you can sometimes work around and fix what it is that might need to be fixed. So I've been, in every job I've been in my career, I've spent had an HR component, every job. And so it's not something I'm familiar with. I've done recruitment and selection, you name it. We've done, in fact, in Deansville, our police and fire were civil service, so I was able to oversee. We started doing assessment centers for superior captain and deputy and chief positions. So we were doing assessment centers, so I coordinated that with consultant with civil service approval. And so I've done quite a bit with the HR side of things.
Thank you.
Anyone have any follow-up questions on that? No? Okay. Amy, you want to ask the next question?
Sure. How do you see the interaction between a town manager and the town citizens?
It's pretty simple. You answer their phone calls, you give them the respect that they deserve as a citizen, whether you agree or don't disagree. It's about respect, which I think is probably the cornerstone of how I deal with citizens. Nine out of 10 times, I can talk with them and get the heat out of them so that they can have a conversation and try to solve the problem. Try to figure out if there's a particular issue. It's particularly true with many of the seniors in town and every town, and then it gets confusing. A little issue becomes a gigantic issue. And take the time to sort through it. It's tougher with the COVID period, but you can do it. And so citizens have to be able to say, you know what, I had a conversation with the manager, it was okay, I didn't agree with him, but at least he talked with me. But I think treat with respect every citizen in the community. I mean, that's that's kind of my mantra.
Thank you. Anybody want to follow up with that, anything? No? Barbara, you want to cover the next one?
There isn't really a next one. I do have a question of my own if I could ask it.
Certainly.
Thank you. I think I'm curious as to your experience with grant writing?
Um.
And bringing alternative funds into town.
Alternative funds, did you say?
Yeah.
We've done quite a bit of grant work. I remember back, again, I'm dating myself, but back in the first Obama administration, you may remember the crunch to bring in, what was the program called? The stimulus, might have been stimulus funds. But within a matter of a couple of months, we got directives from state and federal level, write us some grants for, write up the grants for, we can give you road money, we can give you money for police and fire operations. I wrote a grant for school resource officer with the police department, helped the fire department write their, because oftentimes they call them safe grants for different types of equipment. And, you know, I'd like to chase grants, I've complied with, I mean, most of it is making sure that you've done all the right forms and made sure you've done the right, you've looked at their priorities. For example, some of the state grants, they'll list out specifically what they're looking for, what's eligible. So you tailor your response specifically for that, and you do the best you can and figure out how they're going to rate them. They'll often tell you how they rate, so I would try to do that, too. I try to be a good writer. I've gotten better by not doing as many emails and first drafts. In the old days, when it was a typewriter, you really thought about what you were going to write. And so I tried hard to really put something together and put a good product out when I do put a written product together. I do most of my own work, particularly with the computers. I could do pretty much my own documents and presentations.
Thank you.
Anyone have a follow-up with that? Mr. Ward and then Ms. LeBree.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, and this is to find out how you deal with situations that are sort of troublesome. When you when you took over in Georgetown, I think you, they had a poor rating, they were suffering a financial crisis.
Yes.
And you, I think I read in the paper, you said you had to make a million dollars in cuts.
We lost a million dollar override the first month I was there. In part because the, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'll let you finish.
I just want to know how you handled that whole situation.
It was startling, but we realized, one of the reasons why the override failed is because we didn't justify it well enough. It was clear that the public turned it down because they didn't understand it and felt like it was thrown together at the last minute to cover. And they were right. I came in in the middle of that, certainly we were all a part of it. So what happened was, the board of selectmen, as the policymakers, as the board, if you will, made a determination that make the cuts, come up with a proposed level of cuts, but not the police department. They made that priority and said, the police department is important to us because we need to rebuild that part of it. So as you present your cuts and development and alternatives to make things work, that department stays untouched. So we work with that. I brought, worked closely with the finance committee to kind of get their sense of where we're going. We took another look at the income stream in terms of our estimated revenues. We cut back the hours at town hall, and many of the hours we reduced from 40 to, say, 30 in most positions for a couple of years. There were a couple of positions not filled, and over time, we basically tightened the belt. The reserve fund, for example, that the finance committee controlled, was less likely to be used for shortfalls than it was in the past. We picked up 50, 60,000 a year by just tightening up, if you will, just from that reserve fund. There's a lot of hard decisions, and there was a lot of difficulties, but we did turn it around. In fact, the shown is in a chart of how we started to build the reserve fund. The finance committee would often give me a hard time because they thought my estimates were too conservative on the income side, and that was deliberate. I wanted to be conservative, but I mentioned lottery funds, for example, or the excise funds. We were 2009 and whatever year it was that we were looking at, and the economy was tanking, and we were looking at a million dollars in excise funds. Were we going to get a million? I doubt it. So I brought forecasts downward. And all of that stuff gets reviewed by the state anyway, as you get your final reviews. But we built tight, we cut back and made it work in a cooperative effort. The board set the priorities of where they wanted the thing set, and we worked from there and with the finance committee. Finance committee drove the budget in Georgetown, presented the budget at town meeting. It's different in every community, so it was critical that they were part of the process. And again, I have to respect that because everybody's volunteering, and I've got to respect the fact that they're putting their own time and effort into something, so let's see if we can make it work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. LeBree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Delaney, earlier you said that, you know, some of the first things that you would do, daddy, the financial data, you know, you said if you started your first, the next week or so, you'd be back to us with the report, you know, legal issues, projects, IT vulnerability and such like that. If you were to, you offered and accept the position, let's look, you know, three or four weeks down the road from your starting date, and some of the initial work is done, what would you see as your next focus, a particular strength of Winchonin that you would want to focus on, or a weakness that you would want to address? What would be your next plan of attack, if you will?
Well, you never know what's going to happen on a Monday morning, and so there's something different every week. We used to call it what was called a SWOT exercise, S-W-O-T, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And we did that in Wenham with the board of selectmen in terms of what's the state of the community? And we would do it as a sort of a flip truck kind of event or on a whiteboard, where we would have this discussion of what's going on. I would do that on my own in terms of being able to make sure I knew what was going on in town. I have to be involved, I have to be visible, and I have to know what's out there in each department. So part of that is relationship building with every department. I may be able to solve something on this side, but I know there's other things over here that are percolating. It's just a matter of making sure that I know where they are. So I don't think there'd be any shortage of things to do.
Thank you very much.
Anything else before I ask for a closing statement? Okay, Stephen, would you give us a closing statement about your interest in everything else, about being interested in Winchonin?
Sure. And I tend not to be too lumpy, but I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. It's been pretty interesting. I hope I've hopefully have explained enough for you that you get a sense of who I am and whether or not the fit would be best for you. I'm happy to help out for whatever term that you'd like the assistance, and I think I think it would be a good fit. I tend to be very visible in the community, and I think that that's an important piece of being involved with not only the town hall staff, being visible with the staff, but also in the community itself, be it the senior center or someplace else that, in Coventry, we did that a lot, so people felt involved in the process of governance. So I think I can be that person for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take, everyone, I want to take five minutes to let you go write your notes before we move on to the next one.
One second, Mike. I personally, Mr. Delaney, thank you very much for your interest and for being here this evening. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure, thanks very much. Good luck to you all, see you.
Thank you very much. All right, so I want to take five minutes, write down all your notes that you have, and then we'll move on to the second candidate.
Should we go into recess or just sit quiet for five minutes? Okay.
To.
No, I'm ready whenever.
Okay. And everyone else, let me know when they're ready and we'll move on. Mr. Ward, are you set? You muted. How did you mute? Linda, you're going to have to send Mr. Ward a invite back in, please.
Just did.
Okay, you got to unmute yourself, Rick.
Okay.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Salter, are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Audrey, you're all set, you said?
I am.
Okay. Barbara, how you doing? Are you all set?
I am fine, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Where is our second candidate?
It's not 6:45 yet, I don't think she's here.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion for a five-minute recess?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, Ms. LeBree?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And the chair votes are tied, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back on at 6:45. Mr. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We're gonna take a five-minute recess and we'll come back on at, uh, six forty-five. Well, that'll slow you down a little bit.
Not much. I talked, I did talk, I talked to great, uh, to, uh, Williamstown, too, so.
Well, at least you don't have to drive with these Zoom meetings. That's, uh...
I just, I was saying that to somebody today. I just sit in the same chair all day long and I crisscross the state, so. New, new world.
They run gas.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're just waiting on Audrey at this point.
Okay. Everyone have big New Year's plans?
Yeah. No. Chinese food, that's...
Yeah. You had to order, you had to order that probably a month ago.
A couple of days, couple of days. Uh, Amy, you're still muted?
There we go.
There you go. I call the, uh, Board of Selectmen back to session at six forty-five. We have our second candidate. Uh, Mr. Lynch, if you would be so kind as to introduce her to the Board of Selectmen, please.
Certainly, happy to do that. Yes, this is your second candidate. Uh, it's Nina Nazarian. Nina is a, uh, um, been in the municipal world now for some period of time. Uh, you know, is currently, uh, doing, uh, some interim work down in Medford. Uh, she's been, uh, she actually is a Lemonster resident, so right around the corner. Uh, was in Princeton for about almost four or five years, uh, period of time in Tinsborough. Uh, interestingly, she comes out of the, the traditional role, uh, the traditional, um, career path of the first, uh, municipal managers as an engineer. Many people don't know that, but the first municipal managers, uh, that came out a hundred plus years ago were all engineers. And so Nina comes from that tradition. So, uh, happy to introduce her to you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
So let me give you the introduction here. Thank you for your interest in Winchendon. Please take a few minutes to tell us why you are interested in the position and why you would believe, you would believe you're a, be a success in, successful in that role.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the introduction, Bernie. I didn't know that about engineers, because there aren't engineers now coming into this field. Uh, you see a lot of other, other, um, career paths, but nevertheless, um, that just tells you that really there's a lot of different ways that you might find yourself in this role. So thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm delighted to be here this evening and have the opportunity to speak with you all. As Bernie said, uh, my name is Nina Nazarian. I, uh, live in Lemonster and I had, uh, been a public works engineer, working for a couple of different municipalities and, uh, Public Works Department and doing engineering work. Found my passion and pursued my master's in public administration, which ultimately led me into a number of opportunities that I believe have prepared me for, uh, providing Winchendon the interim services that you're looking for. And, um, although we didn't touch on it, but it's been stated, you know, my, my background in engineering and my background is, is really quite diverse, so I, I believe I have a unique skill set that can provide a lot of, um, assistance and continuity of operations for the types of projects that Winchendon is working on presently. And I believe that I have, you know, great background and hands-on experience with budgeting, which I know is pretty paramount and important to you all and, uh, the community as a whole. Um, and I have a number of other components that I've had the opportunity to, um, you know, build and become either proficient in or feel, you know, perhaps more proficient in, whether that's in the procurement role that the, um, town manager plays, or whether that's in the human resources component that the town manager plays. I, I believe I have really the skill set to, to provide the services and the, the support that you need in this interim period of time.
Thank you. Um, I just want to touch on, I know that, um, that you were in, in Littleton, and can you kind of go into how that experience, uh, helped you move along?
Absolutely. Littleton was a, uh, is presently, obviously, a, uh, community that's slightly larger than Winchendon in terms of its budget, in terms of its community size, but, um, community size, they're, they're similar in, in, with regard to one another. Um, probably, you know, Winchendon has a little bit less, um, density than, than Littleton does, but, um, you know, I like living in Lemonster, too. So, um, as far as, um, the things that I was able to experience and learn, there were a lot of, uh, wonderful opportunities there. The, uh, community had unfortunately some, some rough, uh, challenges that they went through, um, different than the challenges that your community has gone through, but nevertheless, they were pretty challenging scenarios, including, um, some fraudulent work by the former town accountant that led into a very unfortunate situation, um, ultimately, when the investigation began. Um, and unfortunately, you know, there was a really, really difficult community response, um, as far as, you know, the circumstances that led to the former town accountant, um, you know, deciding that, um, she didn't want to go through the investigation and unfortunately, um, you know, made some steps to, to, to take her own life, unfortunately. So it was, it was a very challenging situation that Littleton faced. Um, we also had a number of key positions there that had turned over in my time there. And, um, through the bylaws for the community, I worked with the Board of Selectmen and we hired some fantastic people to serve in the role of Assistant Town Administrator, the role of Finance Director, and the role of Building Commissioner. Uh, my time there did, um, end about a year and a half in, if I remember roughly. Um, and that was because the board and I came to an agreement that it wasn't a good fit, but that, you know, we both agreed to wish one another well and, um, allow a smooth transition where we worked together, uh, while there was a transition. And then I left the community and moved on to working for the city of Medford, um, so that I could assist them with some special projects.
Thank you. I think that covers, uh, some questions that were asked ahead of time, so I just wanted to clear that up ahead of time.
If I, if I could, Mike, if I could just jump in on that, though. Uh, Nina, as I recall, uh, the, uh, it was a very un, unfortunate situation with the, uh, the fraudulent, uh, activity that took place. Uh, I actually remember being involved and talking to, uh, someone else in the town back when that happened. That, that all occurred before your time there, though, correct?
The investigation began during my time. However, um, the, you know, the investigation continued up until, um, sometime in mid-July when, uh, the investigation was dropped because there was no one to pursue at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Ward, if you would ask the first question, second question?
How much do you know about Winchendon and its recent history, both financially and politically?
Thank you. Um, so I, I've had the opportunity to read, uh, the DLS report that was prepared back in twenty fifteen. I saw a number of recommendations there. I also have seen that in, in past minutes and past work that, uh, the community has done, that there's been progress on a number of those initiatives. I know that you guys are working on a number of different projects, including, um, you know, trying to bring more financial resources into the community, which, um, you know, appears you guys have done a phenomenal job on. I, I'm familiar with the change in the, um, executive leadership, that is, the Board of Selectmen at, at the, you know, at that timeframe when the community had some financial challenges or some significant financial challenges. I'm familiar that you guys have really turned that around considerably with some hard decisions, um, and some, you know, collaborative working on trying to, to resolve the, the challenges that, the financial challenges that presented themselves as a result of the health insurance, um, the unexpected health insurance, uh, costs that presented themselves. And, uh, you know, it, through my career, given that I've been living in the Lemonster area, I've, I've tried to keep my ear to the ground, uh, on Winchendon, because at one point when the position was open prior to Keith's arrival, I had looked at the community, but, um, that's just mainly because of the geography to my home. And, you know, I think that my experience in managing projects and managing budgets and being, you know, in a, in a small staffed organization would provide a great transition for helping Winchendon continue on the path that it's taken to make leaps and bounds to, to, to try to set the path on, on one that's, um, quite frankly, sustainable. So, um, I also will say that, um, I have, know that, that you guys struggle, like many communities in central mass, on economic development, but, you know, I've, I've applaud you for the work that you guys are doing with some of the other entities to, to do, um, some marijuana, uh, HCAs, as well as, you know, your more recent agreements to move forward with a brewer, a microbrewery, if I'm not mistaken. And so I know you guys are really working hard to try to resolve some of those financial issues, along with great management decisions and, and roles and responsibilities and accountability.
Thank you. Anyone want to follow up with that? No? Okay. Uh, Mr. Labrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, welcome, uh, Ms. Nazarian. Um, having read the, you know, the twenty fifteen, um, DLS report and, and, and knowing of the financial difficulties that we've went, gone through, um, one thing this board has really str, striving, stroven for, um, is transparency. Um, what happened, uh, seriously damaged the, our citizens', um, you know, belief in the, in the board and in the local government. So we have worked really hard over the past five years to regain that trust. Um, and, and some of that, the conflict, if you will, um, when you look at the town manager, the school committee, you know, the finance committee. Um, how do you, um, envision an interim manager, um, you know, managing those relationships with, um, with the other two major, major players in, in the, in the game, the FinCom and the school committee?
That's a great question. And I, the first thing I will say is that what struck me when I first read the report, um, was that the community had asked the, by a group decision of all three of those boards to begin that study. It, it really struck me because I thought that that was really profound in that there was unification and that there was overwhelming support by, you know, all aspects of the leadership of the community that run, you know, essentially the entire community soup to nuts. And, um, I think that's really great, because if it was just the Board of Selectmen, and, and as powerful as that is, it just says that much more when the other two committees were also behind that and supporting that same thing, because, you know, everyone being on the same page, creating a baseline of, um, you know, a, a place to begin that's important for all is, is paramount and, and stakeholder agreement, which I think leads into the question you're asking, which is, you know, how do we continue to foster those relationships and ensure that those relationships continue and are built upon the probably already existing positive ground that, that you have established? Uh, and I noticed you also have tri-board meetings on a regular basis. Um, you know, certainly continuing those things, getting myself familiarized with all the stakeholders, obviously, um, having them, um, giving them the ways to reach me and making sure that they always have access to me, and then I can, of course, communicate that information back to the board. Um, and essentially, you know, continuing open dialogue and communication, following the board's lead, quite frankly, to continue fostering those relationships. I, I hope that's answered your question.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any follow-ups with that? Okay. Uh, Amy?
Okay. It's expected that the fiscal year twenty-two budget will be prepared by the current town manager before he leaves. However, there are several months before the budgeting will be presented to the town meeting. What's your budgeting and financial management experience, and what are your thoughts of the impact of COVID-19 on municipal finances? And finally, how well do you know Munis?
Um, so I'm sorry, I actually wanted to clear my throat and not interrupt you, so I muted myself then realized that, anyway. Um, so I missed a little part of that because I realized I had to unmute and there was a little, um, so I know you asked about COVID-19, you asked about, um, a couple of other pieces, and I just want to make sure I heard all of your...
Oh, sure. Um, we want to know, um, what your budgeting and financial management experience is, and also how well do you know Munis?
Thank you very much. So as far as, um, budgeting and financial management skills, um, you know, in prin, well, I will say, my, my, my path to learn that arena came, um, very early on, actually, in my engineering career, when I was pursuing my master's in public administration. And so as an engineer, um, the community that I had worked for, the town manager there, um, I had made him aware of my interest to pursue this career, and I would work with him on bond rating calls as an engineer. He would allow me to sit in. So that, that was quite a while ago, but that just, um, I'm mentioning to demonstrate that my interest in really capturing that field, since it wasn't the field that I had entered in, as some, you know, may enter in the finance world and then move on to the management world. Um, even though that wasn't the field I entered in, I really grabbed it and tried to learn it soup to nuts. So I was very interested in bond rating calls. I did a lot of reading. Um, I, I did my own budgets, uh, working with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee in Princeton when I was there. Um, worked very closely with all finance directors and communities where I wasn't solely responsible for the budget, whereas that was the case in Princeton. Um, I developed, uh, four budgets for Princeton that were no issues, um, positive free cash balances, positive projections, conservative revenue, um, assumptions, uh, a lot of the standard practices that would be used in ensuring that, um, you know, the community has a healthy, uh, balance at the end of the year and is not in a difficult position. Um, I also was interested to learn more about bonds and bond options, and, uh, enrolled in the treasurer's coursework that they have in August typically of each year, pre-COVID, and went to treasurer's school and learned about bonds and, and learned, you know, about the different options with bonds and the timeframes and some of the legal requirements behind them. Now certainly, we would rely, you know, the community would rely on the treasurer for those types of things, and the treasurer in, in large part would rely on the finance, the financial advisor, but I've worked very closely with these types of people, and I understand their language now. Um, and I'm very comfortable with that language as well. Um, you know, I've worked very closely with DLS. I worked very closely with DLS on the issue that presented itself in Littleton, worked closely with DLS on issues that came up in Princeton, um, mainly just, uh, trying to leverage the, the community's resources and ensure that we're on the right track. Um, you know, uh, making sure that we're following the best practices. Some of the best practices that were written in Winchendon's report were best practices we established when I started working in Princeton as well. And, um, also, you know, just really dove right in. So I, I feel very comfortable in the area of financial management, and I feel very comfortable working with the Finance Committee and really all the stakeholders that, uh, the town manager would need to work with in order to ensure that we have a good budget, you know, whether it's prepared from, by somebody else and managed by someone else. In this case, the, um, Mr. Hickey would be... In this case, Mr. Hickey would be preparing it. And, you know, I hopefully would be the one who would be ensuring that it was on track with the support of, obviously, the town accountant and other staff. As far as COVID, I have really kept up with the COVID dialogue and discussion from the administration, the state administration. I try to attend almost all of the calls relating to COVID, which often includes some discussion about the financial picture and often includes some discussion about financial resource, whether it be the CARES Act and whether it be, you know, availability of funding and/or how funding needs to be, when it needs to be spent and how it needs to be programmed. You know, a lot of that is a little bit of high level and not so much at the accounting level that, you know, the town accountant would be the one learning some of those more strict details. But like your financial management review in 2015, I think it's important for the chief administrative officer to closely follow the budget process and ensure that the process is being managed and support the town accountant, quite honestly, and provide any resources that the town accountant or department has need in managing their budget. And as far as, I think you asked also with COVID, you know, what impact it will have. Unfortunately, there's no certainty as to what impact it will have. But I think that a lot of communities at this point in time are forecasting that it's going to have some impact and budgeting more conservatively to address that. And I know that the state has put on a, back in, might have been June or July, if I remember correctly, they had a roundtable discussion at the State House. It was virtual, of course. And there was some dialogue then. And I know that there's been dialogue since then. There's been a lot of attention paid to the CARES Act that, you know, was, had, has or had a deadline of the end of this, well, today. But then lastly, you asked about MUNIS experience. And yes, I do have MUNIS experience. Littleton was a MUNIS user as well as Tewksbury. I feel comfortable in the role of the town manager with the skills that I would need in order to pull information from MUNIS, review information on MUNIS, approve information on MUNIS. I don't have the level of experience that somebody else who'd be entering information into MUNIS might have though.
Does that answer your questions, Amy?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else follow up on that before we move on? Okay, Barbara?
Um, thank you. How do you envision your role as the interim town manager? And how would you bring yourself up to speed on the issues that are facing our town?
So I view the role as one to keep things, that existing processes going, carry the water that you have up in the air or juggle the balls that are up in the air right now. It's, you know, I really see it as one that's, the interim's role to support what you have going to maintain the momentum, quite honestly, and to the degree practical and possible. You know, it will take me, to your point, a little bit of time to get familiar with the stakeholders and all, you know, get, establish the relationships. But, you know, I'm pretty, I use an open door policy. I welcome people emailing, calling, texting, especially, you know, staff or board members. You know, texting is, whatever method that works for you, works for me. And I'm reachable anytime. And so, you know, I would just really use as hands-on approach as possible to get to know folk. I don't have a problem being the one stopping down to introduce myself to somebody that I haven't met yet. And I'm happy to roll up my sleeves. You know, it's really quite typical of this role to have to do that. And so, you know, I would do anything I could to support systems that you have in place that you like and maintain them. And, you know, if and ever there is something that you'd like to change or I think may be beneficial in changing, those are the types of things I think we should have discussions on so that I can, you know, float it past you all because you all have the knowledge of what's maybe worked in the past, whether you were on the board or not on the board, but you may have seen it as a resident or another committee member, perhaps. And, you know, I'm, in many ways, while I can fully function and do my job and keep you all posted and informed of what's going on, I'm going to rely on you to kind of guide how you'd like us to keep the momentum going.
Thank you.
Let me follow up to that before we move on to the next question. Okay. Project management. Winchenden has a number of projects in the pipeline. The redevelopment of two vacant school buildings into veteran housings, the development of a marijuana cultivation facility, and the development of vacant property with groundfield issues into a microbrewery. The rebuilding of Central Street. Can you describe your experience managing multiple complex projects?
Absolutely. I mean, I think this is certainly one of my areas of my greatest, one of my greatest strengths. You know, project management was, you know, essentially the basis for my, for the beginning of my career. I would argue it was more project management than it was engineering, but I won't bore you with why I think that today. You know, I have, you can almost look at everything as a project, anything as a project. But that's not to discount the fact that you're talking about four complex, very involved and projects that have a number of different checkpoints. And those are ones that I can do just fine with as well because, you know, my approach to them is to make sure that the information is well organized and to make sure that stakeholders are informed and to make sure I know what's going on to the degree I need to be at whatever level it is. If it's my project to manage and I'm solely responsible for managing the project, which obviously isn't necessarily the case, there's going to be a lot of different stakeholders. But if I'm the lead, let's say, I'm the main point of contact, I'm going to be very, very familiar with the project and be sure that I know all the elements. If someone else is leading, then I'm going to be peripherally familiar with the project and make sure that we're, you know, meeting the different deadlines and criteria that we have and moving each along so that there is a good process to make sure that one project doesn't get left behind because we're focusing too heavily on the other project, unless that's the will of the board. I don't know if I answered your question there. So if you have a follow-up, don't hesitate.
Well, I guess my follow-up to that would be that the projects that we have currently moving forward is very intricate, especially with the downtown project. We're heavily invested in redoing our water lines and sewer lines in that project also. The state is obviously funding the bulk of that. I think it's $5.6 million. It's slated to go, it was slated to go this year, but obviously with the COVID, it's not going to happen until next year. But we heavily anticipate that. That project, we're working with stakeholders right now as far as the, working with them on the sidewalk, you know, how to keep them open and what we need to do to keep them. So I guess that would be your role in that.
Sure, yeah. And I, you know, I, you know, the, some of the best and most important areas of project management is a lot of the same with regard to other matters. We don't, nobody wants a surprise on the project. They want to be notified in advance. They want to know what's going on. That includes, obviously, the public. And, you know, that assumes that, you know, at that point, all the other stakeholders already know what's going on. And then the public is being informed in a timely fashion and getting notifications, you know, ensuring that there is good communication channels to the public. You know, in the case of a construction project or a downtown project, the one that you described, you know, I don't know what access the community has to, you know, sign boards or other types of signs or reverse 911 types of calls. Sometimes they're referred to as Code Red because that's one of the companies that does that type of work. But, you know, utilizing the systems that are in place and, you know, evaluating if those systems need to be improved, if at all.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ward?
Yes, thank you. All of the town's collective bargaining agreements have been settled, but there is always the administration of the contracts and general personnel management. Can you describe your experience and approach to personnel administration?
Thank you, absolutely. So for personnel management, you know, the term is very well coined. There are people and everyone, you know, I treat everyone the way I'd like to be treated. And so my approach is to be as open and honest as possible, establish policies and procedures where, if policies and procedures need to be established, in this case, I anticipate in the interim role, following established policies and procedures. And if, you know, if there's a scenario that presents itself where someone's not familiar with the policies and procedures, I'd make myself first informed and then extend that information to the person so that they knew what process I'd be following to ensure that we're going through this in a very thoughtful manner that was laid out in existing policies. I mean, obviously, every collective bargaining agreement details procedures relating to various things that may come up, whether that's a grievance or steps beyond a grievance. And, you know, I know that you have also some personnel bylaw information as well on your website that I looked at and, you know, following the steps necessary. But really, I mean, it begins with a conversation. I think everything begins with a conversation and trying to understand what, if it's an issue that's come up, what the issue really is, what the core of the issue is, and being able to effectively communicate that and share that information with the board so that you all are informed of what the information is so that collectively, as a group, the best decision can be made. So very comfortable in those areas and, you know, consider myself very approachable and, you know, welcome feedback. That's really big for me. I don't think, perhaps as elected officials, you get a lot of it. But I often find, you know, there's not enough feedback in the world. And so I welcome feedback. I welcome constructive suggestions, whether that be from staff or whether that be from the public. And, you know, it's something that I think helps us improve and do better every time. So it begins with a conversation, is as simple as it is for me.
Thank you.
Audrey, I'd like to follow up the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you just briefly outline, what would be the first things you would do? How would you spend your first, you know, week as interim town manager of Winchenden?
Well, I would definitely want to be sure that I have first-as-first communication, lines of communication open, making sure that, you know, the basics are there so that everyone knows how to reach me, everyone knows, you know, my technology's fully functional and I have everything I need to be able to communicate back and forth. You know, along the way, I'm not shy, so I'm going to greet folks and I'm going to say hello and spend a little bit of time getting to know everyone. That's going to be pretty important to me. You know, I don't, I'm not going to go straight to my office and sit there for the first week. That would be something I, it just wouldn't be in my approach. I couldn't do something like that. So getting to know people and ensuring the lines of communication are open is probably what I would work on for the first week.
Thank you.
Okay. How do you see the interaction between the town manager and the town citizens?
You know, I, it's very much the same to me. It's a, you know, I'd like people to feel the, that they have the means and methods and the opportunity to reach me if they should desire. I also welcome them, you know, reaching to, if it's another level, that it would be better suited to answer questions. You know, I certainly don't expect everything to go through the town manager's office from citizens or otherwise. Citizens need to be able to reach whoever they need to reach. And that includes the town manager. And, you know, I have taken plenty of my own messages and taken plenty of my own calls and responded to all of my own emails. So really, nothing's really any different. I don't hesitate in going to a property that maybe a resident has a concern with. Let's say it's a public works-related matter and a resident has a concern. I would ask the DPW director to join me, probably, if it couldn't be resolved over the phone and meet the resident at their property or at the edge of their driveway where they're experiencing an issue. So really, you know, multi, multi-optional, quite honestly. As much as I won't sit at my desk for the first 40 hours, I also won't be hesitant to go out or take a phone call and respond back as quickly as I possibly can. I like to respond, you know, whenever possible, within 24 hours because that's ideal. So, you know, even if it may be a response that I need to get back to you because I don't have the information at this point. I try to hold very closely to expectations I set. I'll get back to you next week. I make sure to get back to people next week.
Thank you.
Any follow-up on that before we move on to the next question? Barbara, you had your follow-up question for the.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. I am interested in grants. How you are at grant writing, obtaining new grants and alternative funding sources?
I'm very comfortable with grant writing. I don't know if that's the engineer portion of me or what it is. But to me, grants are, they're actually a little bit of crossing your t's and dotting your i's and a little bit of creative writing depending upon the grant itself. You know, some grants are pretty mathematical in that, you know, if you meet certain criteria, then you're likely to be awarded. Other grants require a little bit of creativity. And then there are some that are, that fall somewhere in between. I feel very comfortable with both of those areas and all of them and have experience writing in, you know, many different types of grants, from federal grants to state grants. And, you know, even the occasional unusual, not unusual, but not the traditional path, like a nonprofit type of scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any follow-up questions before I ask for a closing statement? Okay. Nina, if you would like to give us a closing statement, that would be great.
Thank you, I would love to. I hope that from the questions you've asked today and the answers I've provided, you have seen that I have the skill, the time. Quite honestly, we didn't touch on that, but I certainly have the time, the interest, the dedication to Winchenden. I, you know, really believe I'd be able to help you all with the work that you're doing and ensure that work that's already in progress, priorities that are already set from whether that's five years ago or more recent work that you guys have been doing, to move those things forward. And I, the area that I believe that, you know, I really can support Winchenden that's quite different from, you know, many at this point, you know, again, getting back to the comment Bernie first made, you know, I come from two very different backgrounds educationally. And those backgrounds give me a very, very good base for, you know, things that run across different aspects, whether it's technical, whether it's soft skills and it's administrative. You know, I really feel very comfortable in all those areas. I, you know, I'm one that believes that we're always learning. I certainly still am learning and growing in my career. And I will always hope to be doing that well until the day before I pass. And, you know, so I'm going to continue to try to learn from things that are going on outside of our organization and bring those into the organization and, you know, improve on areas where I could use work and development because I believe in professional development. So those are the types of things that I would like to leave you with and let you know that I'll work very hard to support you all in your transition. And, you know, my door will always be open and I'm happy to speak anytime about areas and work that we're doing so that we can make the best use of your time and the community's time.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and for the opportunity to speak with you and that you had interest in working in Winchenden. Anyone else like to say anything before we sign off with her?
Thank you.
Yes, just thank you very much for your time and your interest.
Thank you as well.
Okay. Nina, thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
We'll be in touch.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask for a five-minute recess and then we'll start our debate.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Um...
Ms. Labrie.
We need to go into executive session. So are we going to come back from the recess and go into executive session?
No. Okay, so, no, so all of the debates are done in public.
Okay, that's what...
And then executive session will be for, once we choose a candidate, to go over the contract negotiations moving forward.
Okay. That's what I want needed clarification on. Thank you very much.
And I think if I could, a more appropriate term would be discussion, not debate.
Right, discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Move for a five-minute recess.
Okay. And can I, Rick, you seconded, right?
Seconded.
All right. Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Labrie.
Aye.
Mrs. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Ward.
Aye.
And I, chair votes aye. We're going to be in recess at seven, 7:24. We'll come back at 7:30.
Okay.
Is everybody ready? Thumbs up from Audrey. Mr. Ward?
Yes, I'll say aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm a aye, yep.
Okay. I call the Board of Selectmen back at 7:30. So before we get started, I'm going to get a word from Mr. Lynch and then we'll start our conversation. Mr. Lynch?
Sure. No, I just, you know, hopefully, you know, I think both candidates are good, strong candidates. Obviously, that's a decision that you have to make, but I think they give you a couple of good options to take over for the next three or so months until we can find you a permanent town manager. My recommendation to boards, whenever I am involved in these recruitments, you know, we've got, we've done about 60 or 70 of them now across the Commonwealth, is always, you know, I think this is a good opportunity for you each to discuss what you liked about the candidates. You know, it should try to, you know, you should try to be positive about what you like about each one and which one you like more, and then go from there. So that's the, my recommendation to you. I'm happy to take any questions about the candidates or the process, but, you know, hopefully you are satisfied with the people we've brought forward.
Before we get going, do we have any questions for Mr. Lynch before we start our discussion? Ms. Labrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bernie, obviously without, you know, breaking anything that's confidential or wise, the mutually agreed upon separation between Nina and Littleton, again, without compromising anything, can you tell us anything about that one way or the other?
I think, I think actually she addressed it as best you can. It was just not a good fit. You had a long-time town administrator there and, you know, they went down one path and there was a lot going on there, I will tell you, in the town with the finance director. That's caused quite a bit of a ruckus. You know, there were a few other changes going on with some staffing, with some developments that were taking place in the, in the town. I just think it was a case where, you know, some board members may not, may have wanted to head in a different direction to start with, and then ultimately the town went a different direction and there just was some friction. But she had a good long tenure in Princeton, came well recommended from Princeton. I knew the people in Tingsborough that worked with her. I knew the people in Tewksbury that worked with her, and she's well-regarded amongst the managers of the state. So I think it was just one of those cases, it just wasn't a good fit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Bernie.
Anybody else have anything before we get started? We're not taking any public comment this evening. Okay, so, let's start with, Mr. Ward, give me your initial impressions and we'll go there.
Well, I think both candidates were strong from the information they gave us. I mean, obviously, I favored one, and it was very close. I mean, in my tallies, only off by two points. So I think they were both strong. I think Mr. Delaney has a lot of experience. I think he can step into the job immediately. Ms. Nazarian, Nazarian, he has a lot of experience in public works, which is important also. So they both have some strong attributes, and to me, it's coming down to who can step in the first day and get this thing going.
Thank you. Ms. Labrie.
Um, I was impressed, sorry, with Mr. Delaney. He has a very extensive background, many different things, Employee Relations Officer, sometimes somebody's manager, interim business manager for a school department. I feel like he is definitely, definitely qualified, perhaps a little bit more so than Nina, just because, let's face it, as he put it, as he said, he dated himself, he's had, he has a lot more years of experience just based on that fact. I like Nina's, you know, engineering background. I think that it kind of brings a different perspective to a town manager position or the work that a town manager does. So that's a tick in her favor there.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Um, okay, Mr. Delaney, I like, you know, some of his words that he chose, like consensus or respect, which is sorely needed in this town if you're going to get anything done. It's so important. And I really liked the way he presented it. I also made note of the munis because we have to keep in mind that we're also going to be needing a new treasurer, and you need somebody with some knowledge of munis to know even how to interview for that position, and it would be him, I'm assuming, yes?
I believe the treasurer position is being interviewed by Keith over the next week. So before Keith leaves, I do believe we'll have a new treasurer in place.
But he'll be transitioning that person into the job.
Correct.
It is the town manager, manager purview, right?
Yeah. So I just think it's important, also, you know, he highlighted visibility, and I think a town manager has got to be visible, and that's important. Nina, I'll be honest, I don't get this whole engineering relationship to town managers. Somebody can explain that to me on another point, but it sounded pretty good. I liked her economic development ideas and looking for feedback, being accessible to everybody is important. I think I was, she kind of lost me a little bit when we were talking about projects and she kept saying, well, whoever's in charge of that project, then she'll know, like, periphery about that project. And I'm not sure she understands the town manager's in charge of every project. Does that make sense?
To a degree, I guess the project, like the brewery, we wouldn't be in charge of that or, I get the point you're making, I'm just saying, some of those projects with, like the Veterans House, we don't really have anything to do with that. I think she was highlighting maybe the scope on to be involved in understanding what's happening, you know?
Yeah. Somehow I was left with the impression, I think that she's used to a bigger staff.
Okay.
If I may, and she might, Barbara, I understand where you're going with that, but I think it also speaks to, she's not going to be, I hate to use the term control freak, you know, if someone else has a project that they're in charge of, where she's willing to let that person do their job, and she'll be there in the peripheral, so she's there to support them. I got, that's kind of a little bit what I got. And just, you know, your comment about, you know, what I said about the engineering, it's just, the only way I think I can put it is, from my own experience, I spent 30-plus years doing client services, project management, you know, those sorts of corporate positions. And then when I started substitute teaching and then becoming a parent, I looked at those new jobs from a different perspective than someone who had only been a substitute teacher or who had only been an educator because they had that outside knowledge. So that's kind of what I was, where I was going with that. It brings a different, you bring a different perspective to a job by having, you know, some other, some other background knowledge from a different direction. And I think she said she was a civil and...
Engineer.
I'm sorry?
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer and environmental.
Bernie also made that connection, I don't know if it's...
My comment was that it was more, was primarily historical. The first managers were all engineers because their responsibilities were primarily building infrastructure and doing projects. That was the role that the first managers, again, this is more of a trivia thing, but more, the first city and town managers played that role. But there are still engineers out there that, or there are out there that are, do have an engineering background in order to deal with infrastructure and project management issues.
But you know what? To be perfectly honest, it is important to us because we have structural problems.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Salter.
Um, yeah, I think they're two very qualified candidates, but for me, I look towards Mr. Delaney. I think he has much more financial experience, and to me, this critical time is about the finances. I mean, long-term engineering is great and, you know, we do have a lot of projects, but, you know, this is just a short period of time, and to me, the focus should be the finances. So I think for me, he's the stronger candidate.
Okay. I think both candidates are strong. They both have different strengths. You know, we have some major projects coming up, but right now, the interim role is to kind of get us through a caretaker process till we put a full search committee together in the future. You know, I like the engineering background. We have some projects that are going on. I like Mr. Delaney's well-roundedness. You know, each, like I said, each candidate has their own strengths to be in, and, you know, both touched on communication with the community, and I think that's an important moving forward because, again, we want the community to be involved in what we're doing moving forward, and also, when we put a full search committee together, that's going to be important in driving the... important in driving the next town manager, full-time town manager. So, you know, I really like both candidates. They have both different set of strengths. Ms. Labrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, to the chair and to Bernie, in Nina's cover letter, she indicated that she was interested in a long-term relationship with the town of Winchendon. When I read that, I asked, she would be interested in a full-time permanent position. Playing devil's advocate, obviously, we don't know, we have not made a decision yet. Should she not get the interim position, and then a few months down the road, we have a search committee and we're looking for a full-time manager, do you think she would be interested in...
I don't have an answer for you on that, Audrey. You know, I think that she has an interest in the, potentially in the permanent, you know, we had some discussion about that early on, you know, very early on, but she realizes that she'd have to compete for that job. Whether she'd be interested after going through this process, if she were not selected for the interim, I'm not sure.
That's fine. Fair enough. Thank you very much, Bernie.
With that being said, I'll look for a motion on a candidate.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move that Mr. Stephen Delaney be hired as the interim town manager.
Would I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any further comment on that? Not seeing any from the board. I will call a vote. Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Ms. Labrie?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, I will contact Mr. Delaney and let him know he was the winning candidate, and I will also talk to Nina and thank her for showing up.
Please do so. Please express thanks for her, for her interest. It was very close in my mind. I have to agree with Amy. Short-term, I think Mr. Delaney brings stronger financial strengths to the table.
Right. Okay, so, we have an executive session. We'll talk about contract. Let me read that. Executive session exemption number two, conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the subject matter being the interim town manager. We will adjourn from there this evening and not come back into open session. Can I get that motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote? Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Labrie?
Aye.
Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is 7:47. We're going to executive session. Give me about ten minutes to contact the candidates and go from there. I'll see you on the other side. Thank you, everybody, for watching this evening.
Thank you.